Yes, I am.
Thank you for answering for the record. Delegate Purnell Halona, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I am.
Excellent. And Delegate Paul Begay, are you on the line? My boss, do we still see him?
Delegate Paul Begay is on the line.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then Chair Daniel So, are you on the line? Okay, we have five members present. We'll proceed on to invocation. Delegate Halona, can you provide an invocation for us this morning?
Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes.
Okay, if I don't get cut off, I'll be by, I'll talk tomorrow. Sure, I can do that, thank you. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. We thank you for all the wonderful gifts you have been giving us today and in the past. Thank you for all the wonderful things that are coming up for us today, tomorrow, for all the people. Lord, we thank you for all the wonderful food blessing that you have given us with our families. We thank you for all the wonderful times that we've been having in this beautiful weather that you've been giving us, with all the green pastures out there for all the cattle to graze on and enjoy their lives as well as us. Lord, we thank you all for these wonderful be gifts and bounties that you have given us, Lord. We ask for your guidance today, Lord, and the job that we have to do to complete working for the people of the Navajo Nation. And that we may be right, make the right decisions. If we have any problems, we need to work them out as best we can and move forward with our lives as well as the Navajo Nation. Lord, we also want to thank you for the support you have given us through all the years, especially right now with all the bad COVID that's been going around, Lord. We ask that you continue to eliminate this virus from our lives and that we all can go back to life as normal and continue to be thankful that we've made it through this era. And, Lord, we want to also bless all those and keep them safe and happy that have become sick from that virus, especially the long, long, the people who have a long jeopardy on their virus. We ask, Lord, that you protect them and heal their bodies as we move forward. Also, Lord, we want to bless all our bedrooms that are out there again and thank them for their services that they have given to us here in the Navajo Nation as well as the United States to protect us, keep us free so that we may live our lives in freedom and move forward. We also thank you, Lord, for all these blessings that we are all going to be giving to our people with all the spending that we're supposed to be spending. We also thank you, Lord, for all the help that you have given us and help us move forward in these decisions that we need to make, Lord. We ask all these blessings in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much, Delegate Halona, for that invocation this morning. We'll proceed on to announcements. Committee members, do we have any announcements?
Chair Halona?
Yes, Delegate Halona.
Yeah, I just wanted to make an announcement that I did have a NIP committee planning meeting, a NIP meeting scheduled for tomorrow, for Friday morning, but at this point it's been canceled until further review. So just want to put that out. Thank you, Chair. Bye, Chair.
Thank you, Delegate Halona. Committee members, any further? I see there's a, I was trying to find this email from Mr. Rico. There's a petition for a Navajo Nation Special Counsel session this Thursday?
Yeah.
1:00 PM. Looks like there are ten delegates who signed on to it. Legislation, it says, "Proposed emergency legislation to approve a formal amendment to the fiscal year 2022 Navajo Nation Indian Housing Plan for the Native American Housing Assistance and Self-Determination Act of 1996 in housing block rent funding by adding a new program activity for utility" and other legislation. So, committee members, if you're interested in supporting that, legislation is scheduled to be considered tomorrow afternoon. I don't have any further knowledge on anything related to that legislation. I hope it is an amendment to help us pay for people's utility payments since the disconnect program is going to be restarted. Okay. We'll move on to item two, recognize guests and visiting officials. I want to acknowledge everyone who's on the line. Thank you very much for joining our committee meeting today. Because we have delegates who need to present legislation in other committees, I'm going to use my discretion and just move us on to the next agenda item. But thank you for joining us, it means a lot. And to everyone who's listening out on the world wide web, I hope we're good entertainment for you this morning and you hear some positive news about your government and its good works. Item three, review and adopt the agenda. I'm Ms. Chi here, and Ms. Benali is in the next room. I'm sitting next to the speaker, so I'm just going to go ahead and read this into the record here. This is the proposed agenda of the Health Education Human Services Committee, 24th Navajo Nation Council Regular Meeting, September 28, 2022, 10:00 AM. Presiding, Honorable Daniel Lee So, Chairperson; Honorable Carl R. Slater, Vice Chairperson; via telecommunications, one, call meeting to order roll call invocation announcements; two, recognize guests and visiting officials; three, review and adopt the agenda; four, review and adopt journals, August 31, 2022. Reports, A, Department of Dine Education, the Office of Dine School Improvement, ODSI. Update report, Curriculum Development per Form 2 results of previous coordination of curriculum development with universities. Presenters, Jahanthan Phillips, delegated education administrator, Principal Education Specialist, ODSI, Dorothea Littson, Principal Education Specialist, ODSI, Dr. Harold Begay, Superintendent Doty, Dr. Carmen Moffett, Assistant Superintendent Doty. Six, new business, A, legislation number 0160-22, in action relating to Health Education Human Services Committee and Navajotia, supporting and authorizing the Division of Aging and Long-Term Care Support to apply for elder services, funding from the Administration for Community Living slash Administration on Aging Older Americans Act Title 6 Nutrition Support Service and Caregiver Grants, parentheses, parts A, B, and C, parentheses, and to participation in cycle seven of the National Resources Center on Native Americans Aging Needs Assessment, titles, quote, "Identifying Our Need to Survey Elders," end quote. Sponsor, Council Delegate Daniel Lee So, co-sponsor, myself, delegate leader. B, legislation number 16422, in action relating to Health Education Human Services and Navajotia Committees and the Navajo Nation Council approving the reinstatement of Shandine Deputy or Deputé as a member of the Navajo Nation. Sponsor, Council Delegate Herman M. Daniels. Seven, old business, none. Eight, closing meeting announcements, adjournment, next meetings. Committee members, as I shared earlier, there is discussion of doing the legislations first to accommodate the schedule of our chair, who's representing us, I believe, on the Secretary's Tribal Advisory Committee, that he said, the STACK. That's quite an honor, and I'm really happy that he's out there representing the Navajo Nation. And then, second, we have committee members need to present legislation. So, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the proposed agenda.
Motion, Alona? Second?
We have a motion from Delegate Wanika here in the Budget and Finance Room. His motion was to move item six, new business, to item five, and the reports would be the new item six. And that would be done in the adoption of the agenda as long as there is consent from all the committee members. Delegate Halona, do you consent to that as a second?
I'm second to that.
Okay. Committee members, discussion? Any legislations or things we need to discuss or discussion items you want to add on? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the vote. Delegate Paul Begay, how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes Green.
Delegate Halona, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Delegate Shirley and So, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Thank you. Delegate Wanika? Chair So, have you joined us?
Yes, I vote Green. Go ahead and preside.
Thank you. And Chair, is it true, are you on the Secretary's STACK?
Yes, I, um, and actually, Ms. LaShana So is helping coordinate. But in the communication with the STACK, I listed items that we need to have the Secretary address is the expiration of the quadrilateral agreement and how to best move forward as it's limiting economic development for small businesses. And then also the right of ways for waterline, power lines, and roads in the eastern agency. So those are some priority items. And I'll share the memorandum that Speaker and I endorsed. I'm hoping that Tommy Soce, Staff Assistant Speaker, would send it out since he did help me in correspondence. Thank you, Chair.
Well, congratulations, Shanai. I am very happy that you are representing us on that committee, and we congratulate you. I will definitely be getting in touch with you so you can raise a couple items with Secretary Holland. We really want to have the transfer of the old BIA school site from Lakota Community School, have that be taken over by the nation to produce a public service academy. And since it is BIA land, we'll need their involvement and support. So something I'll fly for your attention another time.
Wow, that's great.
Committee members, so on the review and adoption of the agenda, we have five in favor, zero opposed, and the chair not voting. And we'll move on to item four, which is review and adopt the journals from August 31, 2022. To Chair, Delegate Wanika, motions?
I think Delegate Paul Begay.
We have a second from Delegate Paul Begay. Committee members, any discussion? Visions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Shanella, how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes Green.
Delegate Halona, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Delegate Shirley and So, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Chair So, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Delegate Wanika, how do you vote?
Green.
Vote of five in favor, zero opposed, and Chair Pro Tem not voting. The journals are adopted. We'll move on to the new item five, which is new business. And this legislation's final authority is the Navajotia Committee. So I'll just read the title into the record again, and that's legislation number 016022, in action relating to the Health Education Human Services Committee and Navajotia, supporting and authorizing the Division of Aging and Long-Term Care Support to apply for elder services, funding from the Administration for Community Living slash Administration on Aging Older Americans Act Title 6 Nutrition Supportive Service and Caregiver Grants, parts A, B, and C, and to participation in cycles eight of the National Resources Center on Native Americans Aging Needs Assessment, titles identifying our need to survey elders. Sponsor is Chair So, co-sponsor, myself. Committee members, do we have a motion to consider the legislation?
Motion, Halona?
I'll let you have that one, Delegate Halona. And we have a second from Delegate Wanika. Committee members, do you have any questions on this legislation? Twice? Three times, this is a simple reauthorization or authorization for applying for services. Okay, committee members, there's no questions or discussion, so I'll go down and ask for the votes. Of course, the legislation moves on to Navajotia. Delegate Paul Begay, how do you vote? Delegate Purnell Halona, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Delegate Shirley and So, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Chair So, how do you vote?
I vote Green, thank you.
Delegate Wanika, how do you vote? And Delegate Paul Begay, how do you vote? Okay, I think he might be presenting his legislation now before RDC, if he's not gotten back on. So we'll excuse him for this vote. Committee members, we have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, and unexcused. And that is for legislation 16022. We have item B, 5B, legislation number 16422, in action relating to the Health Education and Human Services and Navajotia Committees and the Navajo Nation Council approving the reinstatement of Shandine Deputy as a member of Navajotia. Delegate Daniels, I believe we have you on the line. Gata, good morning, Shadat.
Yes, that was Chair.
Thank you very much for joining us this morning. Committee members, the chair will entertain a motion to consider the legislation 16422.
Motion.
Motion from Chair So.
Second, Delegate Begay.
Okay, second from Delegate Begay. Committee members, do you have any questions on this legislation? Going twice? Going three times? Delegate Paul Begay, how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes Green.
Thank you. Delegate Halona, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Thank you. Delegate Shirley and So, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Thank you. Delegate Daniel So, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
And Delegate Wanika, how do you vote? Thank you. So, committee members, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair pro tem not voting. That concludes our new business and the legislative action items. So we will now proceed to item 6A. Department of Dine Education, the office, who's the office of? The Office of Dine School Improvement, ODSI, update report, curriculum development per Form 2 results of previous coordination of curriculum development with universities. And I think I was informed that Ms. Littson would be providing the presentation today. Is that correct?
Under both later, that is correct. This is Dorothea Littson.
Thank you very much for joining us, Ms. Littson. The time is yours, and as you committee rules of order, that's also 20 minutes, or is it just flawless? I think there's a time limit, actually. Standing committees, it's just sort of in custom to do the 20. Okay, well, everybody heard Delegate Wanika and I deliberating over here. We went through our legislation pretty quickly, so we have plenty of time for the presentations. But I know there are a lot of items that are committee members need to attend to concurrently. So, Ms. Littson, let's go ahead and begin your presentation, and please recognize whoever you need to recognize. I'll go on mute, and if you need to use the share screen function, I believe that's available. And we'll start off with 20 minutes if you want to use that maximum amount of time. Otherwise, brevity is also appreciated. Thank you.
Oh. One of the major things that we're charged to work with is under the Navajo Nation Sovereignty and Education Act of 2005. That's the one that drives the work of the whole department. And because of that, we work really hard, our office really work hard, the staff and my colleagues, and at that time, our boss, Dr. Calvin White, really drove this initiative to where we work directly with teachers to see how they want the schools to be governed. So it was really that came from them, and that was written into the Dine School Accountability Plan, and that was submitted to the U.S. Department of Education. And so, as a result of that, we learned early in April 2022, we got an email from the U.S. Department of Education. And at that time, they told us, "Be prepared to implement this accountability and to use the 2021, 2022 school year data, this coming fall, or this school year." So as a result of that, our office, because we've been involved in this and we know the how DSAP is statute, and we had enough information, our staff, so, and our bosses always told us, our former bosses always told us, "These are the phases." And he presented that many times before the council, before all the program managers and the superintendents, they then thought, they asked, who you thought, though, although the Navajo Nation Board of Education, he put them in phase. These are what's need to be done. So in phase one, to develop the school technical guide, that's a team effort. And we've been working on that out of our office. And one of the things that we really need to work on as a team is to develop the rubrics for what is it that we mean by leadership, and what is the best practices, and what professional developments are needed. So that's part of what needs to be developed. And so, but that has to be a team effort for all the, all the program within the Department of Dine Education needs to come together to develop that. And then the other piece to this was to develop the Navajo Nation, the Navajo Education Information System. It's a huge comprehensive database that would be utilized to, for school and student data to be compiled. So that's one of the major things that they've been, they've mission, they don't need. So, and then part of phase two, in order for us to grade a school, one of, one of those criterias is English standards, curriculum, and assessment. Not a math standards, curriculum, and assessment. A, don't be here. Science, though, A, yeah, standards, though, curriculum, and assessment. So where I highlighted green, those are a go. But the missing link for us as a nation is the curriculum, the curriculum for science. And so, one of the things we were working with is with Arizona State University, was to develop a STEAM curriculum for the 6A. And you're going to know and learn that we've developed that. There's like 14 modules for that. What we need is a K5 grade curriculum and a 9 to 12th grade curriculum. That's the missing piece, and we continue to work with Arizona State University from the engineering department to help us move forward with this. And so, Navajo Language and Culture Standards, Curriculum and Assessment. That's the real, also the piece. At 15 years, at 18, open the hat, ah, your class, though, I see the net, that's, though, I see, it's, it's, it's. Curriculums, standards, A, but alone, yeah. Not a curriculum, A, but then. Not a assessment, be assessed, though, the Nelly, gee, ah, Hajo, Navajo language, the oral language. If China, but yet not, and at fourth grade, though, eighth grade, though, 10th grade, but yet not, and, eh, eh, Nia, huh, huh. But the curriculum, P, Sigi, Nia, eh, then. And to know that deep, but the, though, Nish, Niki, don't need, we got a letter. And Hushit, ah, eh, Benina, eh, yeah. We brought in OSCAD back in February into our office, height up in the Nish. Eh, um, a quetzasli, ah, the, in the, eh. What the heck happened? Guys? Guys. Hello? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought. And then long before that too, last year, our boss, Dr. Calvin White, and then at that time in OSCAD, there was Vera Johnson. They were working together, they had established a partnership with Penn State. So, before Dr. White left, he gave me the delegate, you know, he said. So, from that day forward, I've been working with Penn State in developing. And then we were involved with both OSCAD too. So, as a result of that, we worked with both with OSCAD in February and we said, where do you really need help? Because there's a major turnover in staff. And then the program manager there. Hasidai. Character development building curriculum. No, Navajo government yet. We continue to work with Penn State. Over the summer, we brought in teachers to develop a curriculum. To this day. Teachers. To develop a curriculum. To this day. At. We're going in a new direction. But yet, the priority seems to be DSAP because U.S. Department of, you know, the U.S. Department sent an email. That should be a priority. Eh eh ya. Form two. So, some of the work that we're doing. Eh eh, using data process at the school site to develop a comprehensive plan and to support the school's implementation of that plan. And then the other thing that we continue to work on is to develop that school technical guide. Schools. With the state. When you look at the state accountability plan. None of these are the forms that we need to complete. That's one things that we're still working on. And there's some minor things that still needs to be done. We need to create rubrics for the evaluating, how we're gonna use that. So, we can explain that in this technical guide. Curriculum development. With the help of ASU. We were able to develop modules. We were gonna work on an NSF grant, looking for money to develop this K-five to nine twelve. Eh eh, character development, character building curriculum with the help of Penn State. Currently, we're piloting. We developed the character development curriculum over the summer with teachers. Although today, they're implementing it, they're piloting it every month. And they explain how things are coming about. But the goal. Next summer, next school year, this coming summer. To finalize this curriculum. Next school year. Eh ba'shtadi ne, though it's in progress. One of the things that's a missing link. Underneath the Navajo curriculum, Navajo language and culture, the curriculum piece. The assessment. That data would come back and we would put it, that becomes part of the school grading system because that's what we said in DSAP. That's one of the missing thing within our education. That's part of this. So, in my previous job, one of the things I've worked with and I had some... I was able to, I've worked extensively with West Ed, so I knew that this particular person, Sharon Nelson Barber is her name. I reached out to her. And within one week, she put all these, these people who do test makers from Smarter Balance Assessment. We have to go before the superintendent. No outside entity. But we made that connection. Eh eh ya, we develop our Form Two. We had a work session. All this work is tied to our offices' Form Two. Number one, implementing the next school accountability plan for thirty-four tribally controlled school. Provide DSAP School Improvement Initiative for twenty-four grant schools and teacher institute. Number two, the goal statement says, to work with thirty-five tribally controlled school on implementing, using data process, STEAM and STEAM initiative. To work and the measurement is to work with thirty-five data teams on school improvement and engineering curriculum, five staff times six schools. Number three, work with Higher Education Institute Partner in Research Curriculum Development to revitalize and sustain Navajo language and culture. Collaborate in Research Curriculum Development Initiative with partners, three per quarter. Work with ADE, Navajo New Mexico PED, USD on Title One and Part A and B of ESSA. Connect the Using Data Process in DSAP Part A Comprehensive Support and B Targeted Support in ESSA. The fifth one is populate NEIS database with DSAP's academic indicators. Work with thirty-four tribally controlled school and academic information transmission to NEIS. Our office for FY twenty twenty-three. For FY twenty twenty-three. Universities. Eh eh, to this day, we don't see it in writing. And because of the emails that we got from the U.S. Department of Education to start planning to implement this. But we've always been working on this to this day. And we know that right now, six thirty-eight proposal is still in a draft form, I believe. And but DSAP. That should be a really priority at this point. Eh eh ya. Eh eh, universities. If we can't perform these things that we said we're gonna do, our performance. Grading criteria. Is gonna be graded low. Halay eh eh. Eh eh, igahsitsi, our office. Eh eh. Eh eh. Eh eh, with holdish. Oh, we're going in this new direction. Navajo Nation Board of Education. We're going in a new direction. I have new people coming in. I have my team coming in. Eh eh. Eh eh, I still continue to work with Penn State. My former boss. Eh eh. Twenty twenty-three, the deadline. Na benazla la. Eh eh. This department should run in that fashion. I'm talking from my heart, how I see it. In the last fifteen years. The netanil. Ocean tanil. Eh eh, we went to OSCAD. On late STEAM curriculum. Ba deit. Eh eh. Eh eh.
Thank you. It's been over twenty minutes now, so I wanted to bring us back to our schedule. Does that conclude your presentation? Committee members, I guess to start off, the chair will entertain a motion and a second to accept the report. A motion from Delegate Alona and a second from Delegate Wanika. Committee members, questions, discussion on our report. Chair will recognize Delegate Wanika.
Yeah, Ms. Litsin, this is Delegate Wanika. You were saying that this ever been doing universities. There was, I guess, a proposal or whatever was signed off. Do you mean it was signed off by the Superintendent Begay or Mr. White? And I just am a little bit concerned based you were very direct as far as your concerns are. I'm kind of a little bit worried that you might... Uh, I'm kind of, uh, a little bit worried that you might be getting yourself in a situation. But, uh, there were certain documents that were signed that's not being complied with. Uh, why are you are 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 you being told, uh, not to continue? With the development of the curriculum and all the things that you're supposed to do. Chila es benadro tanden. Olahashit adani. Thank you.
I share it long.
Uh, Miss Litson, please. Uh, committee members, are there any other questions right now? Uh, recognize Delegate Holona, just gonna ask a question, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Miss Lissa for, uh, a a question I just wanted to ask about the. Uh, the, uh, D S A P plan, the the net accountability plan. Uh. How long have you been employed there with, uh, with this department and how long have you been working on this? You know, you said you've been working on this D S A for a long time and I know I understand it's been going, uh. When I started back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we approved that. Policy to begin and there were certain individuals that were supposed to be working on it to get us to. Move in that direction, so I was just curious about that and and I see right here it says the, uh, accountability system. It says supposed to be starting with the twenty twenty two school year while twenty twenty two school year and I get I understand that. Probably the virus had something to do with our school system as well, but I was just curious about that, thank you, Miss Lissa.
Thank you, Delegate Holona. Uh, Miss Litson, you're recognized to respond to the question.
Okay, um, the first question, a concern of eh eh you see binina. And then the question is, um. Did Dr. White sign it or? What what is the process? So let me back up on that on that question. Um. When we started working with D S A, as I have told you, the missing link in the science portion. There's already a science standard and there's already a science assessment. But the missing part for our nation when we're out in the school is there's no science curriculum. So back in two thousand eighteen. Uh, Dr. White. Had reached out to A S U. At that time to develop this particular curriculum. A K twelve curriculum, a steam curriculum. So with that, there was a grant that was that we partnered with A S U on that one. When we partner with A S U on that particular grant, it was funded. And as a result of that grant, we were able to build the sixth through eighth grade. Steam curriculum. That's where we currently have fourteen curriculum. I was saying that fifteen, but when I look back, it's fourteen curriculum that we developed. So we developed that, we trained the teachers. And some of those teachers have those curriculum out in the school. So this particular next grant. We were looking at. Another researched grant to do with N S F with A S U to partner with A S U. To finish out the kindergarten through fifth curriculum and the high school curriculum. So that grant is due October next month. As a matter of fact, I think I believe it's this particular grant was due. The first week of October. And. Back in August. A S U, Dr. Sean Jordan drove all the way up here to partner. To continue to complete that. But at that point. We. The superintendent, he met with the associate superintendent and the superintendent. That's where he was told. And we were told to break ties with all universities, so from that point. We just put that as a halt. So now I don't know. If A S U is gonna go ahead and continue to submit a grant. So but we I have no idea where where that's at. And how we're gonna move forward without that, that's one. Eh they yeah, qua bah hadestze. And then the other one. Is with Penn State. That one. Before Dr. White retired. And Vera Johnson at the time was the program manager for Oskad. They had worked together to establish. A partnership with Penn State. To work on developing. The character development curriculum. So before he exit. His retirement, that's when he said, carry this on. And so I've been working with Penn State from since last year of October. So up to the point where. We came together and on that was Dr. Holly Kalugo. That is on from Penn State, she's actually in Navajo, she's from Samuel. And so we work extensively with her. And so. As of. We were working on a grant, so we submitted that grant, it wasn't funded. So we maintain and we continue to work. And that's when we reached out to Oskad because Vera Johnson has left as a program manager too. So we informed her staff and said, this is what we were working on. So how should we do this and how should we proceed? And at that time, the staff said from Oskad said, you know, you guys should go ahead and continue. To work with Penn State and develop. The Navajo. The neck character building curriculum, continue to go with that. And then help us out with the the Navajo government piece of it. And then we'll work on this side on the other standards to to develop the curriculum for that, we said, okay. So as a result, we continue to work with Penn State. And over the summer, we brought in teachers, about seven teachers, and we brought in elders. And we worked with Penn State. And they were here for eight days and we develop a curriculum. Now that's being piloted in by our teachers right now. And we meet on a monthly basis. And so the goal is to develop that curriculum so we can have a curriculum in place by next year. That's. That's how we came upon that. That's what we're, so at this point. Our leaders are telling us to stop working with all universities. But we need these universities to help us. Through some of these work that we're we're charged to do. So and I don't really know the reason why, I really don't know. Eh they yeah, qua hot eh. I don't enda, your second question, yes, I've been working here for fifteen years, the shinin lady that bah honi si. The inception and then where Title Ten. Eh I don't two thousand five enda belaansli. Eh be kaho eh de niilnish. Eh be kaho eh yeah. D S A. To put it into a place where. How are we gonna work with schools? Has it A eh be kaho. What should that accountability plan? Ha eh she be you this so to leh. You nachi. Eh yeah, school belong belong to the ish to leh. Illon. That's when we brought my colleagues and I here at this office. We work with. We. The we work with teachers through so many teacher institute. What we did is we took the E S S A language. And then we went before and worked with our teachers. Di koni so hey di A A. How can we work with you? Eh ye go teachers yindashnish. Eh in nachi enda eh yeah, that language went into D S A. Eh be has oh. Eh yeah, naas hot they yeah. Eh eh yeah, to U S Department of Education. Eh eh kuaike. Yes, so eh yeah, be das so eh yeah, but eh hot they yeah. And it was in the waiting, we would been in the waiting process to hear back from the U S Department of Education. And it was until last spring. There they had a little minor question, but we answered that. I don't know eh yeah, by April, they emailed us and said, be ready, it's gonna be approved. Start implementing it, ni hito ni. So eh kuaike eh binna che eh yeah. Dila na hadit eh kuailaha late A na di cha laha no. That the no. Eh within this office that was. Eh banahasisne, some of the missing links that we're trying to prepare. Those are the things that we should be working on together. So we could be prepared to implement this D S A fully. That should be our number one priority right here within Navajo Department of the Net Education. As a group. Eh cut eh do leh and eh yeah, ban siskes. Cut eh la. Do she hat.
Committee members. Um. Or is open to further questions or comments? Yes, Delegate Wanika, me sure, Delegate Holona.
We didn't be able to hear from, uh, Miss Mocker or Dr. Begay on. Or they are. Some of this for, uh. Pretender.
Um. Let's see here, I I think I saw some email correspondence that would you would not be able to attend or maybe there's some other individuals, so. Um. Yeah, there, Dr. Moffett. Dr. Begay.
I guess, uh, Honorable Chair, just Dr. Begay.
Uh, Delegate Holona, you want to ask a question or do you would you like me to?
No, just to acknowledge that, um, I'm online here.
Okay, well, the the committee has asked a couple of questions and I think. The main. Concern that I've heard thus far is that. That O D S I was working with university partners to develop curricula and. That is necessary for implementation and. They've been instructed not to continue. The partnerships with the universities to seek funding for developing the curricula or to just continue with working on them, so. We were interested in understanding, uh, the genesis of that decision and and why it was made. And if it's been made, so. Can you respond to that, sir?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, they, uh, shenan, uh, no shenigge, not on him. And Honorable Chair, Vice Chair and all the audience out there online. Uh, yes, we made a decision to this focus on. Service providers, W D N universities and others. Who have a record of having changed schools around. There are a lot of service providers out there, vendors out there who tout. That they can do this, they can do that with schools on and on and on, yet. They don't have a, uh, track record of doing so. Aqua. Our time, the use of budget monies are very, very scarce, are very important. Aqua. We notice. Uh, they be haotzi for the last fifteen seventeen years since two thousand five. Oh, T A belong to gosh. And schools have not improved. And. We said we need to. Refocus. And begin working with service providers. Who have a record and there are, they are out there. Who have a record of changing transforming schools to high performing schools in academics and other majors. Aqua, that's what we're focusing on a. Uh, the language, culture language, the unhin he or in the nan tiniggi. I don't know so slap been dodginish. There's some very. Good resource materials right in Dodi, uh, in the Department of Education. Aqua. Oh, corner as in there. We have not seen any evidence that these are being. Implemented and monitored and measured out in the schools. Oh, cut eh. And so we are taking what has been worked on and to revise, update all of that. So we're doing that. Although a university providers, uh, niniggi, the ones we have seen. They do not have a record of transforming schools, much less Native American schools. Even less Navajo schools. The service providers, universities, others we work with. And we have evidence. That we can transform schools. Eh que. Kai sha. How come that the don't need, maybe the school sites can contact them directly. We have two hundred and thirty nine school sites, two hundred and thirty nine. In Arizona, New Mexico and Utah. Where we see. Up to eighty percent non proficiency. So that was a bit a case that that nestling. At oh, T A, this whole gosh, this the whole gosh everywhere. And we need to stop. What we are doing and begin to work on. The schools out there, there are schools on Navajo that have. Been doing very well. We need to see what they are doing differently. Such that seventy to eighty percent of their students are performing or. Doing well in reading, writing and math. Eh sha, but they need initial. Direct services with the schools, that is our focus. Both, uh, Dr. Moffett and myself. Ni he. We come from the fields, we come from the school sites. And I myself, I have at evidence. Graph documents to show that schools can become high performing schools, there are ways to do that. Aqua. Eh bond eh. In our program managers meeting. The program managers, Department of the Net Education. They have said up in on no. All these years, for the last fifteen sixteen years. We have consultants after consultants and universities. Hey shit, that that eh. Ni ha ha ka, they come and go. They take their money, they take their time and they're gone and we don't see any change. Ani he from within the Dodi department. So the Ani he eh do hako, ni hiti ne da. Aqua. Uh, the different departments, so. Ah, ah, telndal nish, they're all into their naso da. At da hiti ne eh, that so and so's pet project that hit it no. Akwado hajoo, she start there nista. And that's, uh, something that we're addressing, putting the everyone as. A team teamwork, get everyone on the same page to work directly with the schools. So the hot A they shot on niche. The curriculum map and you have such things as vertical, horizontal curriculum alignment. You have such thing as quarterly plan, you have pacing calendars, performance eh that eh. Um, I should myself, I've worked with that for ten or eleven years as an assistant superintendent. And we have evidence that schools can be turned around eh que. But the on nishko. As your Honorable Chair Daniel So said one time sometime back. It is the classroom, it is the classroom. It is the classroom, it is the classroom where. Where improvement, major improvement begins and ends in the classroom auto. So that is our focus. Aqua. I it's understandable, and the way that are there, um, but that is in this. Ah, though, could the hot aid. Yeah, and that we don't see a connection directly with the curriculum mapping right in the school. Professional development for teachers, for principals, for superintendent, for board members. A A, you see. We're highlighting that, that is our focus, and so in the interest of time, Honorable Chair and Honorable S E Members. We would like to request a separate meeting presentation right from. Department of the Net Education and the staff. Of call with that, I just want to. Uh, respond again. To this report, which was never shared with us. And I see this as a presentation from. The Office of the Nest School Improvement on their own and under their own accord, up. High Tashinque, Yan, Yan Suckess. But the Program Manager Director. He is on this meeting, in our meeting. Every, every time we meet weekly on all of this, whether it's D S A P. Whether it's six thirty eight, whether it's S E A. A bond date on. And we need everyone's thorough understanding, Beniya. From the Department of Education within the department. Ah, aniche hoojoba, Tiki, ka. Ah, the que, oh, ah, old capiti, Nene hoojoba, Chen, Dine, P, ah, the heart of the deal, need. Working directly with direct services to the school, okay? Any key hot, ah, uh, basla nightly, and and that, on that note, I just want to request again, respectfully, we request. A separate presentation from the Dodi Department itself, uh, for. Uh, your, uh, information and certainly your support, thank you, Honorable Chair and Honorable Members, okay?
Uh, thank you very much, Dr. Bagay, for your thoughts and information. Um, I was just consulting here with Delegate Salona and Wonika about. The need to advance this discussion as you recommended. And that said, I'll I'll hold off on any comments until we wrap up, so. Committee members. The floor is open to questions or discussion. Okay, hearing none, I'll just offer a couple of comments, and that is. Um, one. Uh, just informally right here, and that is half the committee, we're interested in having a follow up conversation. To discuss D S A P. I think that Chair So and I participated in a meeting with Dodi. On six thirty eight and D S A P has briefly gone or covered at that meeting. Um, several months ago, so I think it's. Time for the committee to reconvene with the Board of Education and with Dodi. On this in particular, that said, I know that we identified the end of this month. To the end of next month. Um, to convene. With Board of Ed and Dodi, I believe, do you have that down, Mr. Chair? Hey, pull up my phone. Think it was the twenty eighth and the twenty ninth. And we could potentially add. A conversation on D S A P into. That time period. Committee members, is there any reason to schedule something sooner with the Dodi? And Board of Ed regarding this? Well, uh, Kelly Wonga, Kelly Wonga asked how soon. At the end of this month, at the end of next month, the twenty eighth and twenty ninth, we had set that meeting with, uh, Board of Education. I thought that that might be, you know, that's an opportunity, we could talk about it with them. So. I do have one request, Dr. Bagay, and that is. It seems like. Your, you know, under your leadership, you, there's been a determination. And some analysis about the progress to date and the best way to move forward. And. To me, this is.
Chair Pro Tem, we can't hear you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, we, I got muted there. Um. I don't know where I cut off, but I'll I'll start over, Dr. Bagay, you you've made some determinations and analysis and. On behalf of the committee. I'd like to request something in writing that documents how you came to these conclusions and why you think it's in the best interest of. Our Navajo children's education to to move forward in this manner. I think what you said was reasonable, but um. It would really help the committee and help to bolster our understanding. And how we can move forward, I mean. There is a mention of fifteen years, but really, I think. This whole endeavor has been going on for much longer than that. And we have English and math. And for science, we have standard and assessment. But we don't have curriculum. We just have the sixth through eighth grade STEM curriculum. And we have the standards for Navajo language and culture, but we don't have. Curriculum for Dine character development, culture, Navajo government, history and language. That that really doesn't reflect well at this time, that it's taken this long to to not have those work products, considering those are. Things that are indigenous to the Navajo Nation and. We can provide ourselves, so. It would be very helpful if we get something strong written and. Clearly documenting and explaining, you know, progress to date, why the decision is being made because. This presentation, uh, just talks about the way things as are, but there's no data to substantiate. Either continuing on this path with the partnerships or not continuing with the partnerships. And then if you can clarify what the protocol or what the method would be. Or you're saying, well, we have. Was it two hundred different providers, or I don't know exactly what you're saying, but maybe having individual schools reaching out, but. That wasn't terribly clear to me, and if you can include that in your report. So. The motioning parties for this report.
Honorable Slater, can I say something, this is Dorthia Litten again.
Uh, yes, please wait, Ms. Litten, the. The motioning parties were. Who were the motioning parties?
Uh, Palaua and.
Okay, Delegate Wonga and Delegate Wonika. Would you be open to requesting a report from them prior to our meeting at the end of the month, something in writing that we can receive? Yeah, they definitely. Um. Let's hear from Ms. Litten, and then maybe we'll ask to modify the. The motion to include that in the motion, does that sound good? Uh, Ms. Litten, please proceed.
Okay, thank you, um, my my biggest worry is that. Our work is on D S A P. We should be clear about how we should be working with schools and we should be clear about. How we should be grading this school, all of that is encumbered in my report. And if that is not completed. Then. That should be driving. What we should be doing out there in the school system. And how we should be working with the school, that is what's guiding the work between our office as. As a department. Of the net education, we have to be clear about that. So when we go out to the schools. The schools are also clear about how. They're gonna be graded. What is all of those things that's in place? What constitute of all of these things? Goes into the pot to help them grade that particular school. We should be working on this as a priority. It's been happening and it's, I mean, it's just been talked about. Who's gonna step up to the plate? This is what needs to be completed. That way it gives us a clear direction. In both sides. Out of our department and the school, so they're clear about. The expectations. Of the work on both ends. So that's my only worry. For us to say that, oh, we're going in a direction of we're gonna provide directive service. Our office already provides direct services as well. But. If these are not gonna be. Fixed. Then how are we gonna move forward, that's still my question as an employee. That's what. Is spelled out in the Dines School Accountability Plan. We said we have to have all these things in place. In order to grade a school. When all those assessments comes in, it's supposed to go into the N E I S system. And then from the N E I S system, that data is gonna tell us. How many percent of those schools? With the, with this last year's data as a baseline. And then to say over three years, if we were to track them. That should allow us to say that, you know. This mini school is five percent are not making it, so they would be in the targeted section. How are we gonna target and how are we gonna turn that school around? That should give us, that's where the technical guide, developing the technical guide, all that language should be in there. If we don't have that. We're still gonna be at loss. That's where my question is, these are the things that has to be worked on, that's just my concern. Thank you.
Okay, you should say, I mean, I guess my question is. In your estimation, whose responsibility is that, because I think to us at the committee, we're, we look at ODSI and.
I think it's all of us.
Isn't that your responsibility?
It's my responsibility, that's my responsibility, and that's why we're, I mean, that's our office's responsibility, and that's what we're trying to do. And part of it is having. To work with outside universities to fix, to help us. With some of those things. Because we don't have all the money, we have to sometimes search for outside money to help us create these things. That's all we're trying to do. So that we could put these things in place. So that. So that the work. Can be complete, so on both parties, they know what we're doing.
Okay, thank you, so I think that, you know, that's where. What we're trying to understand is, you know, there there does seem to be a reasonable decision that's been made by the superintendent and. Um. What he shared was that in his. Analysis, and this is all just verbal, you know, there there hasn't been the progress that we need and that he wants it to be. Attentive and using entities or universities that are able to implement transformative change and then have experience doing that in Indian country and then ideally have experience doing that on the Navajo Nation, so. We have to be respectful to. The superintendent that the council brought on, and we also need to hold all of Dodi accountable for implementing these programs. Because this is not something that anyone can do except for Dodi, you know. The Hesse Committee can't do it, the Board of Education can't do it, the states and the feds can't do it, so we really need, like you said. To to continue and and to step up and and level up, so. We'll we'll look forward to the report, um, from the superintendent and from ODSI on. Why things are being changed because. A quick verbal report, I don't think is sufficient for us right now, just. Seeing text messages and conversation from the committee, we would like something more substantial. Something that we can explain, um, with data. Saying X hasn't been done, so therefore we need to pursue with Y or. This entity is not fulfilling its responsibilities or it's moving too slowly, et cetera, et cetera. So. Um. Committee members, any further discretion? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to a vote. On accepting item six A. Delegate Bagay, how do you vote? Delegate Wonga, how do you vote?
Red.
Delegate Shirley So, how do you vote? Chair Daniel So, how do you vote? Uh, Delegate Wonika, how do you vote?
Green.
Green. Delegate Bagay. Chanelle.
Delegate Bagay, four, green.
Thank you. Uh, Chair Daniel So, you might be muted. Oh, but he actually had to get on the stack at eleven, so we'll we'll excuse him, okay, um. Committee members, we have a vote of three in favor. Two excused, Delegate Shirley So is on travel now. And one not voting, the Chair Pro Tem not voting, so thank you very much, Ms. Litten, thank you, Dr. Bagay. And we'll be corresponding with you on requesting for a a report to really get some clarity on how things are moving and why they're moving this direction and. The committee can provide some feedback if we think that there's an error in the decision. On on moving forward on this, uh, the implementation of the D S A P through ODSI. Committee members, we're at seven, old business. None, item eight, close of meeting announcements, adjournment, next meetings. Ms. Benali, do you wanna cover our agenda for Friday?
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the, um. Health Education Human Services Committee, thank you, Vice Chair Slater, uh, the, um, there. The Health Education Human Services Committee will be meeting on Friday, September thirtieth. At ten o'clock at the Dine College in Shiprock, and. I did indicate it was on the north campus, however, um, per Chair So's direction, uh, we've re. Uh, change location to the south campus. So it'll be over, um, the south side of San Juan River, I think everybody's, um, we've met there before. And it's gonna be at the conference room next to the library. So I'll indicate that, uh, in the, on the agenda as soon as I get it, uh, before I get it posted. And the, um, at the meeting, we'll have directions regarding the Treehouse Domestic Violence Shelter Tour. And they're located on the north side of Shiprock by the hospital. Uh, but that's our schedule right now, and I am still working on the, um, hearing for Monday, October third. And that should be out by the end of the day, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Benali, can you review the content of the hearing again?
Oh, the hearing is, um, what the Health Education Human Services Committee requested is to have a hearing to. Schedule all of the departments and divisions that Hess is oversight to. To receive an updated report. Indicating if each department or division is up to date on the general wage increase. Indicating if each department or division is up to date on the general wage increase for all employees within their department or division.
Okay. Well, thank you for your work on that. Committee members, ten AM, Friday, at the NAC College. In Shiprock and at which building would that be? The south campus.
It'll be next to the li- the conference room next to the library, as I understand.
At the John Pinto Library, I believe. Right?
I I believe so.
Yeah, I remember that. I remember there are all the glass shields set up and, yeah. I don't know if that's the conference room, but I think it's the same building. Okay, in any event, thank you very much. Um, we have a message from Delegate Charlene So saying that she votes green on accepting the report. So. Think that makes it four in favor, one opposed, or?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll just modify that right now. We have not accepted a new motion, and under the rules, we're allowed to continue to accept the votes. And then committee members will be convening on Monday to discuss general wage adjustments and ensure our employees have and will receive their GWAs. Um, Ms. Benali, are we having that at the council chambers?
Um, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, at the council chambers. And Delegate Valona is asking what time?
It was uh discussed at ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock?
Yes.
Committee members, any other announcements? I just saw an email saying that we will have the. Special session tomorrow at one PM. Well, if not hearing any other discussion items, the chair is open to a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Delegate Bagay.
Thank you, Delegate Bagay. Is there a second? Chair, recognize the motion from Delegate Bagay, a second from Delegate Wanika, it's non-debatable. Delegate Bagay, how do you vote?
Delegate Bagay, vote green.
Delegate Valona, how do you vote?
Green.
Delegate Charlene So, how do you vote? Delegate Daniel So, how do you vote? Delegate Wanika, how do you vote? Okay. So we are adjourned at eleven forty-one PM.
Vice Chair, did you get my vote? I voted green.
Thank you. We are adjourned with a vote of four in favor, zero. And uh Delegate Charlene So, we did get your vote for accepting the report. Thank you. Committee members, we'll see you all on Friday. Have a great rest of your day. You will. Oh, yeah, the fair. Yeah, enjoy the fair.
Angelina Benali, are you still on?
Um, yes, I am.
Uh, just, this is Derek. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, was there, did they say there's a meeting on Friday?
Yeah, Friday, there's a special meeting of heads, and they're gonna be meeting in Shiprock. At um Dana College on the south campus by the library. There's a conference room by next to the library.
And what time is that again?
At ten.
At ten.
I'll I'll send you the. Agenda as soon as um the um Chair and Vice Chair review it.
Is there going to be a virtual or just in person?
No, we're gonna um have it virtual.
Okay. Okay, because I'll be in Shiprock already.
On Friday?
Yeah, I'll be in Shiprock.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, we're gonna be in that conference room. I think it's east of the main library, that John Pinto Library on south campus.
At Dana College.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Already.
Okay, and I'll I'll send you the agenda and the Zoom invite as um I try to do. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. All right.